Now, fall to order. This is June 18, 2018. It is 5:30 PM and we are in the Thomas J. Smith Council chambers. Would you all please stand and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Kathleen, can we get a roll call, please?
Rinker.
Here.
Wilson.
Here.
Phillips.
Here.
Graham Murray.
Here.
McCambell.
Here. Okay, tonight first we have a proclamation of retirement. It's gonna be tough to see this guy go. I've seen him doing work around the city for a long time and, uh, do you want me to keep adding on to this or just, alright. Been there for a long time, it's gonna be tough to see you go. But anyways.
Alright, yes, I have a proclamation. Whereas the city of Burlington honors James D. Capps for his long tenure of outstanding service to the citizens of Burlington. And whereas James has been an outstanding and dedicated employee for forty-four years, fourteen weeks, and six days.
Good lord!
And whereas James has, James began his employment on March 11th, 1974. He began as a laborer in the street and sewer department. On June 17th, 1974, James became a truck driver in the streets and sewer department. He remained in that position until July 1st, 1976, when he became an equipment operator, level one, for the same department. He was then promoted to street and sewer maintenance mechanic on December 15th, 1988. Jim then served as an auto mechanic in the vehicle maintenance department for the city from November 17th, 1993, until July 1st, 2000. In July of 2000, Jim returned to the street and sewer department as a street and sewer maintenance worker, too. He served in that position until he was promoted to the street and sewer lead person on August 20th, 2008. He will retire from that position on June 30th, 2018. And whereas James has been a loyal employee throughout his career with the city of Burlington, James has been a big part of our maintenance and planning programs. He has made sure our departments were able to respond and meet the needs of the citizens of Burlington when called upon. James also, was also active on several committees during his tenure at the city, serving on bargaining committees, insurance committees, and employee management relations committees. His leadership knowledge and experience will be missed by his City of Burlington colleagues and citizens of our community. James truly has made Burlington a better place to live, work, and play.
Yes.
Now, therefore, we, the city council of the city of Burlington, do hereby recognize and commend James for his conscientious and faithful service. We extend our appreciation and our congratulations on a successful career and wish him the very best in retirement. Signed and sealed this 18th day of June, 2018. Signed, Shane A. McCambell, Mayor.
And we also have, would you like to read the-
Yes, and we also have a lovely plaque here. It says, "The city of Burlington hereby honors James Capps in recognition and appreciation of forty-four years of dedicated service faithfully and loyally serving the citizens of Burlington. Retired June 29th, 2018," presented by the city council.
Come on down, James Capps.
You've been working for the city for so long, we're not even gonna look the same without you in one of them city trucks.
You still don't carry my truck?
Man, have a word to say, James. Let's get a, come here, all you guys, come on, let's get in on this. I'll tell you what it's gonna take you, Mike, more years just to wipe the city dirt off of you. You've been working for so long.
Sorry.
Get in here, man.
Nope.
Forty-four years.
Awesome.
James Capps. He's a doer, not a talker, but anyways, uh, what a blessing it has been to have you. We're gonna miss all of your experience. You have been a blessing to the city of Burlington, James, make no mistake about that, my friend. Next, we have Mayor's Awards. I'm always glad to give these out, and I don't give them out just to anybody, I give them out to special people. Tonight, the first person I'm giving this Mayor's Award to is somebody that we don't always agree on every issue, which is great. I have my opinions on things, and sometimes he has different opinions on things, and I forgive you for that. This award isn't because we agree on everything. This award is because you represent what Burlington should be and what I try to model to people whenever they come into this community. And I'm just glad that we gotta be neighbors for a while. I'll never forget the day that you walked outside and you were saying, "And everybody wants to be a cat." I don't, I don't. But anyways, I'm really glad to give this to you. You know all the things that you do to make Burlington a great place to live, work, and play. This Mayor's Award, be it known, on behalf of the city of Burlington, Iowa, I'd like to thank you for being a model Burlingtonian. Your caring heart, your thoughtfulness, and love toward your fellow man are your greatest assets and quite admirable. People like you help make Burlington a great place to live, work, and play. On June 18, 2018, this Mayor's Award is presented to Robert Kreitzer. Come on down. You already gave that to your wife. Alright, let's get a, could somebody, could somebody help thank you, Mayor Proton? Yeah, there you go, my friend.
I did.
Cool?
Yeah.
Robert Kreitzer, have a word.
Sure.
Redbeard.
Thank you.
That's the suredest he'll ever speak. I'll tell you what, you're good to him. Alright. The next one, I gotta get this guy outta here. He's here, there, and everywhere now, he's doing stuff, but we wanna recognize you tonight with two awards just because you've been working so hard. We've had a lot going on with the new police station, and man, they've had so many checklists and everything that's been handed to you. They said you've been working overtime. They said they got a phone call at 6 o'clock in the morning or something on a Sunday morning, talking about, "I'm handling it, I'm on it." So it was important to the chief and to the major that I recognized you tonight, and I'm glad that they reached out to me to do this. Be it known, on behalf of the city of Burlington, Iowa, I'd like to thank you for being a model Burlingtonian. Your expertise, your time, dedication, and all that other good stuff that you do on the job is appreciated. You help make Burlington a great place to live, work, and play. But I also have a MacGyvers Award for you because you've been doing all of that, so let's just go ahead and do that. This is a MacGyvers Award that you're receiving tonight. On behalf of the city of Burlington, Iowa, I would like to present you with the Mayor's MacGyver Award. Angus MacGyver was known for having the ability to deactivate a bomb with a piece of chewing gum and a paper clip. Your expertise and flexibility, your never die attitude, and your getting it done-ness that helps you get it done, is why on June 18, 2018, this Mayor's MacGyver Award is presented to you. Rich Joe's Come On Down. I can put this on and act like you're happy to see me. Don't act like we work together, alright? You know what I'm saying? You know, this thing is off, you can watch it. You guys just ditched my fat. You're a tough crowd tonight. You've got nothing to say. Alright. Well, hey, I just wanna say to the, to the Mayor's Award winners tonight, MacGyver Award winner, we appreciate everything that you guys do in the community. To James Capps, who is retiring, thank you for all that you've done for us. We're gonna let you guys get outta here. Thanks for coming.
Thank you.
Not everybody. Everybody's leaving. Brought down the celebrity with you. How you doing, Jesse?
Hi.
Good to see you.
How are you?
I'm the mayor!
He said, "How are you?"
Oh, I thought he said, "Who are you?" You forgot me already?
He just says something we say.
I gave you that phrase. Good to see you.
Oh, fun!
That sounds good.
Have a good night.
You do the same.
Thank you.
You do the same, my friend. Okay, we'll just give it just a second. Here, quiet down, and we'll roll downhill. Okay, Catherine Phillips, do you have a-
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Your honor, I have a, I have a letter here from the National Fire Academy. The letter says, it's addressed to Jim Furnough. It says, "Mr. Furnough, please accept my sincere thanks for your support of Fire Chief Matthew Allen Trexel during his participation in the U.S. Fire Administration's National Fire Academy, the NFA, Executive Fire Officer Program, EFOP. Chief Trexel has now successfully completed the EFOP and required applica, applied research, sorry about that one. On the behalf of the NFA, the enclosed EFOP certificate has been forwarded to you for formal presentation to this dedicated member of your department. I respectfully request that you present this certificate at a formal ceremony inviting your community's elected officials and members of local media to attend, along with Chief Trexel's family. This is an ideal opportunity to celebrate the department's commitment to its personnel and to demonstrate the success of its members. The academy appreciates your commitment to this four-year program and continued support of the NFA. Sincerely, Tanya L. Hoover, Superintendent, National Fire Academy, U.S. Fire Administration, dated May 29, 2018."
This is, uh, this is a pretty big deal. For those of you that don't know, and I'm going to read this, but for those, you know, you probably think, "It's just a piece of paper." A lot of hard work when to get in this piece of paper, so I just wanna say, "Chief, we are, we're really proud of you." I knew you were a winner before they sent this to us, but this just goes to prove it even more, so just glad to be giving this to you. "United States Fire Administration, National Fire Academy, in recognition of successful completion of the requisite courses of study and applied research projects, the National Fire Academy, under the authority granted by the 115th Congress of the United States of America, and on recommendation of the facility confers the title of Executive Fire Officer." That means he's like Dr. Spock or something. "Upon Matthew Allen Trexel, with honors, privileges, and responsibilities thereto appertaining, awarded this 28th day of March, 2018." I just wanna know, what are the privileges that you get along with this? Well, come on down, man, come on down. I'd like to present that to you. Again, you're a pretty big deal. Let's get a picture of this. What is this, executive, what is it, Executive Fire Officer? EFO, I like that.
So, I do have a few words, not a big speech here, but I just, well, my family didn't come, they're probably tired of hearing me talk about the EFO program, but that's who I wanted to thank first because it is a four-year program. I was gone a couple of weeks every year for the last four years, but more than that, I spent a lot of time at work late on weekends doing the research paper, so that was way more time than I spent out at the Fire Academy was doing those papers. So, thank my family, the city for letting me go. My ace reviewer back there, Deputy Chief Ryan, he needed something reviewed for grammar to send it to him, he's awesome at that. So, I scored really well on my papers. I think a lot of that was because I had somebody review them for that kinda stuff. But I just wanna give you a quick overview of the program. Again, it's a four-year, it's a graduate-level program, so it all counts towards a master's degree if I pursue that later on. Before, each class you would have some pre-course assignments, and then you'd go out there for two weeks, and then following the class you had to turn in a research paper. You had six months to do that. Also, I met, I networked with a lot of chief fire chiefs out there from all over the U.S., all over the world, I guess you'd say, Australia, Brazil, Canada, and so I have a lot of contacts now that I wouldn't have otherwise when I'm looking into different things here. The first class we did was executive development, and it was about studying adaptive leadership and solving adaptive problems, which are different than a technical problem where you can just go buy a new switch or new widget and solve a problem. Adaptive problems take a cultural change, so high-level problems, so we studied those. That first year, my paper was on how to improve the ISO rating in Burlington, and I don't remember who was all around since I wrote that paper, but we did take some of the stuff from that paper and put it into place in Burlington. It's not the only reason we improved the ISO rating, but it's one of the reasons. So, the second year, the class was called Executive Analysis of Community Risk Reduction. That was probably the best class that I've taken anywhere, not just the Fire Academy, but it really opened my eyes to risk reduction not being just about fire prevention, it's about risk reduction for the whole community. And for that paper, I actually wrote a policy paper, an action, they call it action research, so at the end of my research paper, I had to produce something other than just a research paper, so I had a policy at the end of that. I will call it a model policy because we can't just adopt it as a fire department because it would take your buy-in. There's a lot of stuff in there that I, high-level, I wish we could do all the things I wrote in the policy that I said we would do. One of the things that I had in there that we need to do to reduce risk was have the third ambulance. So this was three years ago that I wrote that paper, and that's just now something that we're getting, so we did have that come out of that paper. The third class was the Executive Analysis of Fire Service Operations in Emergency Management, very long name. It was similar to the class we went out to the Fire Academy to take the incident, what was that called? The emergency, the incident, the emergency management class that we went out to the Fire Academy as a community for, very similar to that, only it was a two-week version. So every day, we had a new disaster in Central City. That's their make-believe, I think the same city we used for it when we were out there, Central City, and we would have a hurricane, we'd have a tornado, we'd have a flood, we'd have an active shooter. We'd have some major calamity every day, and we'd have to work through, not really the response part, but the paperwork side and the setting up the hierarchy for those kind of emergencies. And then the final class was executive leadership, and it was a really cool class. I think, I know Jim got a survey, and maybe some other people. I had peers and subordinates, I had to send all these links to an anonymous survey, and they gotta rate me on a bunch of different fields, and then we got that back when we were at the academy, so we was a look at ourselves. And then we did a lot more of the adaptive problem solving, so we had to come there with a list of problems, adaptive problems for our department, and we started each day in a small group, and we reviewed either our problem or another person in our small group's problem, so. And at the end of that class, we took a tour of Gettysburg, it's just right up the road there, and we had a, like a leadership tour of Gettysburg. So, Gettysburg, the war of Gettysburg was a big part of the class, there was a lot of leadership lessons that we talked about. We all had to give a presentation. Somewhere along the tour, some person or some milestone in the war there, we had to say, "Okay, this is why this was important, and this was the leadership lesson learned there." And my, my last paper there was another what I call descriptive research, where you, you just come out with some recommendations at the end of your paper. And that was my paper, that one was on the possibility of combining the West Burlington and Burlington Fire Department. So, it was probably the funnest paper that I did. I did a survey of, I had like two-hundred and some fire chiefs from all over the country answer my survey, then I whittled it down to who's actually had a consolidation of fire departments. I did a bunch of interviews of chiefs, of city officials, and came up with some recommendations based on that. So, in the end, it looked like, yeah, it's possible. The biggest roadblock in every community, they all said, was politics. Politics of the departments in Iowa, it's really politics of the state of consolidating. There was really, there was only one example in all the, the whole state of Iowa of fire departments that had combined, and that was Johnston Grimes Fire Departments, and it's still called Johnston Grimes. They have one fire chief, but they don't really a consolidated fire department, so to speak, so that's what I did for the last four years.
That's all?
Thank you very much.
Is that it?
Yeah.
So. Well done.
Thank you.
You guys have any questions?
No, I do have a comment, though. I think your leadership shines through. I, Friday night, we had a call, there was a houseboat sinking, it was the big muddy dock. By the time I got there, they were coming up from Fort Madison, the guy was in, up to his pockets in water in the back of his boat. And the calm that the firefighters that responded to that, the calm and the leadership they showed to resolve that issue and make sure this guy's family was safe because they were on there, is just impressive every time you witness it. So, and that starts from the top, works its way down, so thank you for that.
Thank you.
Would you be interested in reading that paper?
I was gonna mention that. All of my papers, if you go to the National Fire Academy and search EFO and search my name, they'll all come up. The last paper I'll have to send to you, it's not, the link doesn't, isn't up yet, but the other three, the papers are up there for you to read.
Okay.
Thank you. Yeah, I can, I can share that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright. Okay. Next on the agenda tonight is the consent agenda. All matters listed under Item 1, consent agenda, having been discussed, are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items. If a discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately. On the consent we have tonight, the usual, finances and miscellaneous, minutes of previous meetings, payroll and city claims, beer, liquor, wine, and cigarettes, reports and bonds. We have seven resolutions. First is a resolution approving nuisance abatements for various properties. The second is a resolution approving the purchase of a temporary construction easement for 1211 Patterson Street, pen number 11-32-377-021 for the 2017 Patterson Street erosion project. The third is a resolution approving the purchase of a temporary construction easement for 1213 Patterson Street, pen number 11-32-376-008 for the 2017 Patterson Street erosion project. Fourth is a resolution approving professional service agreement with Snyder and Associates for the preparation of the ICWAP application. The fifth is a resolution approving economic development assistance contract amendment and targeted jobs withholding tax credit program contract amendment for Silgan Containers Manufacturing Corporation from the Iowa Economic Development Authority. The sixth is a resolution amending peddlers, solicitor, and transient merchant license fees and adding mobile food vendors fees. And the seventh is a resolution approving sports market study. We have three hearings set for July 2nd. First is a consideration of sale of property locally known as 209 South Gunnison Street, it's gonna make somebody a lovely home. City of Burlington, Iowa with conditions, that is going to be on the 2nd of July for the 2000, or 209 South Gunnison Street home. The second is a consideration of plans and specs for the 2018 Tama Building permeable alley. The third is consideration of plans and specs for the 2018 Depot White Boxing. We have appointments, Mayor Proton?
Yes, we have for the Airport Authority to appoint Elizabeth Van Vlech Sally. We have the Civil Service Commission to appoint Mary Saxton. The Construction Board of Appeals to reappoint Bruce Brockway, and the Library Board of Trustees to reappoint Sarah Goff.
Thank you, everybody, for their service. Is there anybody from the audience that would like to have any of these items removed from the consent agenda? I see none. Counsel?
None at this time.
They got a motion?
Your Honor, I have a motion to approve all listed under Item 1, consent agenda.
Second.
Moved in second. Kathleen, let's vote.
Rinker.
Aye.
Wilson.
Aye.
Phillips.
Aye.
Graham Murray.
Aye.
McCambell.
Aye. Okay. Next, we have time for hearing for consideration of plans and specs for the 2018 Central and Washington Bridge repairs. Publication's been made in the Hawkeye as prescribed by law. Mr. McGregor.
Good evening. The plans and specs in front of you are to do some repair work on the Central Street Bridge. On the overhead projection, you can see the relative location of the overpass. If you'd hit the next slide for me. Have some images of the things that we're trying to take care of here. Some of the abutments and the wing walls are starting to see its age from deterioration. Fifteen years ago is when it was installed. I also sent the council the scheduled study list that Stanley consultants did for us on the costs. I think last week I had talked to you about a budget of $350,000. The estimated cost to do all of the work planned in this conversation is $293,000. The remaining will be paid for, will pay for the consulting fees to do the design work and then inspection, and a little bit of buffer room for change orders.
Move to the buffer room.
And so, I'll go through what we're planning to do. It's retaining wall work, abutment work on the east arm of the overpass or westbound Washington Street. There is a deck panel that looks like it's sunk. We'll probably take care of that as a, as a change order, so.
Is that still gonna fall within the budget that you've got?
I'm not sure, but it does need to be taken care of, so whatever that amounts to, we'll find out when we, when we get to taking a look at it.
So, you, you think we'll be outside of $350,000?
With consulting fees involved, we may, depending on what that deck replacement or that deck patch repair comes to.
Any idea how much more?
I have no idea what that would be, unfortunately. And this is just an estimate at the $293,000, so we'll have, we'll have a pretty good understanding of what that means once we get these bids back.
Okay. Any other questions for Mr. McGregor? Any questions from anybody in the audience? I see none?
I have one.
Uh-oh, I see Marlon. Take your time, Marlon.
My question is-
Could you give your name and address, Steven?
Marlon McKee, 1121 South 12th Street, Burlington, Iowa, I-2601. My question is, how many times are we gonna fix this thing? Can we not get this thing fixed so that we're not doing this every five years? Because we've had it so that you had a ramp, if you were coming from the south, going north, you had a big ramp, gives it all settled. And I think we fixed other parts of these. Can we make this thing so it's more sturdy? Or are we gonna just let it go like Cascade Bridge?
Well, that's what we're addressing now, but I mean, I, you know, to have any type of bridge that's gonna be maintenance-free, that's-
Anytime, anytime we're in the northern climate, concrete, we're gonna run into problems where-
I know, but we should be able to tie this together so that it stays better, and it does. I mean, the interstates don't have this all going on all the time, and they have lots of overpasses and stuff, so it seems to me there ought to be a better fix for it.
Nick understands the engineering, engineering side of that better than I do, so I'll let you comment on it.
But good point, Marlon. I wish the stuff lasted longer, too.
Most of the issues that you're seeing right now are from freeze thaw cycles because of drainage issues of the original design. I don't know who did the original design, but after looking at it, there's some issues where the water goes, and that's the reason why you see the erosion behind the wing walls, and then the abutments are a reflection of that getting down in between. So, ultimately, it's drainage issues, and we're trying to deal with those with this project.
Thank you.
Any other concerns from the audience? Counsel? We're good?
Yes.
That's close enough.
I have a motion to close.
Second.
Moved in second, twice. Kathleen?
Rinker.
Aye.
Wilson.
Aye.
Phillips.
Aye.
Graham Murray.
Aye.
McCambell.
Aye.
Your Honor, I have a resolution approving the plans and specifications for the 2018 Central and Washington Bridge repairs.
Second.
Moved in second. Kathleen?
Rinker.
Aye.
Wilson.
Aye.
Phillips.
Aye.
Graham Murray.
Aye.
McCambell.
Aye. Okay. This is time set for hearing for consideration of a permanent encroachment agreement with Tom Wolf for encroachment into City Rightof Way at 801 Jefferson Street, Burlington, Iowa. Publication has been made. Mr. Tisland?
Mr. Wolf has requested an encroachment, including a ramp and platform adjacent to the building at 801 Jefferson. This is on the 8th street side, just north of the railroad tracks, which is a dead-end roadway. These tracks do not cross at that location. He previously applied for and was granted a permanent encroachment in the same location for stairs into the building. So at this time, he's wanting better access into the building, having a ramp up to the building instead of just the stairs. Will maintain five and a half feet of clear sidewalk space adjacent to the ramp, and then over seven feet adjacent to the utility pole in this location. As I mentioned, this is not a through sidewalk, there's no crossing to the south based on the railroad crossing being removed at this location, so it essentially is a dead-end sidewalk that just serves this property. But regardless, maintains a minimum five-foot ADA with this encroachment.
Any questions or concerns from the audience? I see none. Counsel?
None here.
I have none.
Alright. Can I get a motion?
Motion to close.
Second.
Moved in second. Kathleen?
Rinker.
Aye.
Wilson.
Aye.
Phillips.
Aye.
Graham Murray.
Aye.
McCambell.
Aye.
Your Honor, I have a resolution approving a permanent encroachment agreement with Tom Wolf for encroachment into City Rightof Way at 801 Jefferson Street, Burlington, Iowa.
Second.
Moved in second. Kathleen, let's vote.
Rinker.
Aye.
Wilson.
Aye.
Phillips.
Aye.
Graham Murray.
Aye.
McCambell.
Aye. Okay, ordinances.
Your Honor, I have a motion for the final adoption of the ordinance repealing Chapter 122 Peddlers, Solicitors, and Transient Merchants, and creating a new chapter, 122 Peddlers, Solicitors, and Mobile Food Vendors and Transient Merchants.
Second.
Mr. Tisland?
No changes from the previous readings. Again, this is essentially adding in the definition of mobile food vendors. They currently fall under the peddler requirement- They currently fall under the peddler requirements and how they operate is a little differently. So this requires one application on a yearly basis and then submitting plans for each location if they want to move, move around the city, which most of them typically do.
Right. Anybody from the audience have any questions or concerns about peddlers, solicitors? Nobody? I see none. Counsel?
Let's get it done.
I have none.
Okay, let's get it done on the peddlers. Kathleen?
Rinker.
Aye.
Wilson.
Aye.
Phillips.
Aye.
Graham Murray. Aye.
McCambeau.
Aye.
Resolutions?
Your Honor, I have a resolution rejecting the city bridge funding for Cascade Bridge on South Main Street.
Second.
Thank you, sir. Nick?
Sorry, I was having a little email. The resolution in front of you is, is an action item on the things that we had talked about last week at the discussion. It's on the regular agenda for conversation. Ultimately, we have received notice that the DOT was, we would receive 1.5 million from the Iowa DOT through the state and federal city bridge fund. Due to the lack of funding on our end, my recommendation is to reject the funding. We did receive notice that we received the same funding in 2012. We at that point turned it down because our financial condition was much worse then. And so we'll, we'll stay on the same cycle of city bridge funding, so we'll likely see this come back around. But at this time, my recommendation is to reject the funding.
Right on.
Just ask the question one more time, Nick. When do you expect, best guess for this to come back around?
Yeah, it was 2012. I, I don't know what their rotation is, but I mean, that was a four-year rotation, so and ultimately 22.
Twenty-two, give or take.
We didn't turn that down. We had that funding in place for two years or so before we ultimately turned that down. So that it's only been, it hasn't been that, that long since, since we got off of the list the last time.
Okay.
And this doesn't preclude us from being considered again by us turning it down?
No, no. And they base it off the condition of the bridge, and that bridge is not getting any better. So it will likely not lose any points as far as the, the rest of the rankings go.
Okay. Any questions or concerns from the audience?
Marlin McKee, 1121 South 12th Street. My question is, we keep putting off Cascade Bridge, saying we don't have money for Cascade Bridge. How much money are we going to spend on Main Street down here, Main and Jefferson?
That's, most of that's going to be grant money. Are you talking about the Tiger Grant?
Yeah.
That's all grant money.
Isn't that for Main Street?
That's, that's grant money.
It's all grant money.
For Main Street, right?
Yeah.
Cascade Bridge is Main Street.
Right, but that money is, has to go to that particular place.
We don't give money for that. The, when you get grant money, you have to use it for what they say within their guidelines. It doesn't cover any of Cascade Bridge. That money will have to be used for...
That's Main Street.
And I think Jim can correct me, but I believe at one point in time, that was considered part of, for part of the process. But if I remember, we had a report that they, they, it was too far away. They wanted to be centrally located for that.
So the, the grant application identified the Jefferson Street corridor from Central to Front Street, and then it identified the Main Street corridor from about the library down, down to Angular. And they want to see a project within a, when, when, when the Tiger Grant's being done, they're looking at a defined project within a defined area, and then they put, you, you put together some basic cost estimates for what you're doing to accomplish that. And it's, again, the, it's designed to hit transportation between work and jobs. So as they look at a corridor, they're looking at a main corridor, they're looking at, are you, are you addressing multiple modes of transportation? And that, the, the way the project was defined helped to do that. And as you talk about whether Cascade Bridge could have originally fit within that, the concern was, is it was so far removed from what the rest of that work was within a small confined area that it would dilute it on, when you're on such a competitive basis. I mean, I think it was a couple of percent of applications were funded nationwide, one in the state of Iowa. That being said, it was written the way it was, and it has to be spent the way it was. And unfortunately, that does not include Cas- Cascade Bridge. There could be other, there are, the, the main source of funding that is available for Cascade Bridge, which the council kind of addressed this, the, at the work session last week. You could make this work as a debt service project. To do that, you would be doing interest-only payments for a couple of years, and you'd put yourself using more of your debt capacity than you've set in your policies and is recommended. And ultimately, the flexibility that you're looking for with this, we've talked about this over the course of the last couple of years, fiscal year '24, is when you have the financial flexibility to really work it within your debt service levy and not put yourself in a compromised position where you're backloading debt. And we talked about it at that point from the perspective of looking at it with the same bridge funding that we're talking about now. We know that this is something that will have, have the potential to have as we get more into a favorable timeframe when we actually have the, the financial capability to do it.
Well, all right. My question still goes back to Cascade Bridge, and we come up with money, and several years ago, I went out, you were talking about resurfacing Sycamore Street and just like you're doing some others now. Those streets are in less bad shape than others that I know of, but they're getting resurfaced, and we're spending millions of dollars on those streets when we could be doing Cascade Bridge, which would help our tourism, would help our people get out to the park easier. It just seems like we should be going for more money for the Recplex rather than going for money for downtown. How many times have we done Jefferson Street? I mean, I can't imagine that the business owners down there want us tearing Jefferson Street up again to kill their businesses off again. So it's just kind of, seems like we can get money for bike paths, we can get money for this and that and everything else, but we can't get it for Cascade Bridge. There's a lot of money that I think is in the budget already for streets that can be put off a couple of years. And let's get Cascade Bridge done. I think there's a lot of people in this town that want Cascade Bridge done.
I think most of the people in this town want Cascade Bridge done, but not the sacrifice of putting out streets anymore than we already have. That's, that's just my view. So, I mean, you asked for, you asked a question. I, I don't want to sacrifice any road work at all. We're still trying to catch up from, from probably a decade of time where they, where they kind of put other things ahead of, ahead of street work, so. And again, here's my point. You're saying, you know, you know...
Just one quick question for you.
Go ahead, do your thing, man.
You keep bringing up about manor money. What I'm watching it...
I didn't see the manor money.
I've watched on, one watch sitting at home, you bring up something about manor money. I was wondering what that was all about.
I have no idea.
Did we ever get all our money back from, uh, Hutter?
You got this second half payment from the manor sale, if that's what you're talking about. You had 1.2 million, and you've, you've committed 550,000 of that towards the parking lot out the Recplex, and...
There you go.
Well, I mean, that's not going to, that's not going to fix Cascade Bridge.
Oh, you're talking about... No, it's, no, but we can do it out of the Recplex, but we can't do Cascade Bridge.
Because the Recplex is a $500,000 fix. Cascade Bridge is five plus million. I mean, that's a...
Six eight.
Well, I'm just saying, just throwing that out there, but, I mean...
Seven million dollars, eight, whatever. But the point is, is that's 500,000 now, 500 now, 500, 500. Pretty soon, you're talking eight million. And they're talking about building a Recplex in Bedendorf. I thought Fort Madison was talking about building one. But we're going to go out and help build this indoor thing, and I never heard which side of the, I'll wait until after, just bringing that back up. Anyway.
Any other questions from the audience? You guys have been fantastic tonight. Everybody except for Marlin McKee. I'm just playing, I'm just playing with you. Okay, are we good?
Yes.
Kathleen?
Rinker.
Aye.
Wilson.
Aye.
Phillips.
Aye.
Graham Murray. Aye.
McCambeau.
Aye. Okay. At this time, does anybody have any comments from the audience? Marlin, you coming up for seconds? Yes, sir. Now, these are comments about whatever you want, but again, it's not on the, you can come on up, but it's not on the agenda, so it's not like we can have a back and forth.
I got my list. Give me a minute. Marlin McKee, 1121 South 12th Street, Burlington, Iowa. I just was referring to your Recplex thing. Originally, the parking was going to be on the south side, correct? And it was brought up about having to extend the street, and somebody wanted to move it to the north side. Is that correct?
Are we allowed to speak on this?
For the parking for the new indoor rec facility, it's now the way the design is, the most recent design has it on the west side of the, of the facility, and that came up with the council, did have a discussion about preferring to see it closer to where it would see potential more use from the outdoor Recplex as well.
But I thought if we just moved to the east side, you're not having to move the building back. That was just my, originally, the talk was, instead of having it on the west side, move it to the east side. All you're doing is moving the building. It was brought up about having to extend Broadway. While you're at it, you know how much of a bottleneck we have at Broadway and Division Street? Because everybody's got to come out there. Why don't you extend Broadway on over to West Avenue? Just me thinking. We already own all the property. Did you realize that? Anybody? Anybody? We own the property all the way over to West Avenue. Extend that street, it makes it a second access in case of an ambulance call or anything else. Because when that gets tied up out there, people are coming and going on weekends, I think you'd have a hell of a time getting in there with an ambulance.
That is, with, the extension of Broadway is also designed to go east-west over to West Burlington, so it will wrap around and it will have a second entrance then.
Say again. Go to where?
Over to West, West Burlington Avenue.
Why not to West Avenue?
The right of way that, that was platted for a road in the industrial park, as they, as they've platted it over time, has been that east-west corridor and the, and drainage issues over there. But regardless, the, the roadway that's been designated has been an east-west that goes across that lot. I'm not having a map, I can't show it to you, but if you wanted to work with Nick, you could get a, take, get a look at it.
Well, I mean, I pulled up the, the GIS, and if you take Broadway over, we own the land over to that housing development that's in there, the old housing development, and we own the strip of land where the bike path is. So you could come on over and tie it into West Avenue rather than going back over and tying it up again. You're tying up West Burlington Avenue, which is just creating a nightmare for traffic. Just my three cents worth. And they keep talking about a new Recplex in the Quad Cities and in Fort Madison. I think we're going to be losing money out of there. Keep wanting to get more money from hotel motel tax for this thing. If they build the one in Bedendorf, those teams aren't going to want to come down here. They want us to come up there. And there's a lot more to do in the Quad Cities than there is in Burlington. Anyway, my three cents worth.
Thanks for taking the time and coming down, Marlin.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Marlin.
Appreciate your three cents, my friend. Is there anybody else in the audience? It has maybe two cents to go along with his three, and then we'll have a nickel. I see none? Okay. Mr. Tisland?
Nothing.
Kathleen? Nothing. Lady in red... Is a woman?
Is speaking to you. No, I want to remind you that on Sunday is the youth triathlon. So if you have any youth under the age of 14, 14 and under, this is their opportunity to really shine, and it's so much fun, so come out and watch. They'll swim for a short distance in Dankert Pool, and then they take off and they bike, and they have to have a helmet, and then they run. And it's nothing like an adult sprint triathlon, which takes over an hour even for the top elite folks. In 15, 20, less than 30 minutes, the youth are done. And they get medal, and there's neat trophies, and it's really something to sign your kids up for if you never have. My, my children have competed in it for years and just have a really, really good time. Youth triathlon this Sunday, Dankert Park.
Where did you just come back from?
Triathlon from, in the Quad Cities. I get out of the swim, which is not my strong point, and I raise my arms up in the air and I say, "I lived." I get on my bike and finish it out, but yeah, it's, it's really, really fun.
I know you're all jealous. We get to work with her. Anyways...
I say the same thing when I get up the stairs.
Counselman?
I said at the work session, there's a gentleman, and, and there's quite a few people, actually, but one gentleman's been really combing the riverfront and picking up a lot of trash. He's been there. I saw him two weekends ago, saw him last week. I tried to get over to him and tell him thanks, but I appreciate everybody that's working to clean up our city. It, it's a, it's a person-by-person effort, so if you see a can or pop out or some piece of paper laying on the ground, bend over, pick it up, throw it away. Let's take some pride in our town.
Well said. All right. I'd like to wish all the fathers a happy Father's Day late, but better late than never. Just want to recognize one of our former councilmen in the House tonight, Councilman Murray. Good to see you tonight. Appreciate all the hard work you've done in the past. Just good to see our Texas connection, Loretta and the boys. Good to see you guys tonight. Thanks for coming down. We just got through with a week of steamboat days. It was a different steamboat days than what we've had in the past, but it was steamboat days all the same. And we need to support our community and the local events. They help Burlington go, so let's, let's be supportive all the way around. I had, oh, they had Juneteenth this weekend. I was running late because it was so hot, and I didn't get a chance to even get to the event. This is my first year that I missed it, but I did make the Steamboat Days Parade. I want to thank Mayor Pro Tim. Thank you. We threw out 15 pounds of candy. It was a wonderful day. My arm's a little sore, so I'm going to ice it tonight. And then the other thing is, next week is coming up. Were you going to bring up next week?
This week?
This week?
Yes.
Next week is this week. This week is next week. I'll stop right there. I'll turn it over to the Mayor Pro Temp.
Yep. So what, what our mayor was about to speak about was Snake Alley Festival Film, which is my hands-down favorite event in Burlington. It starts June 20th, which is Wednesday at noon, and it goes till the 23rd. And it's short films, so if you're into anything that's like Sundance or other indie films, that's, that's what we do all day long from noon till, I think, about 6:00. And then every night, there's going to be a feature film, and one of the days, the day that they were watching Clerks, Brian O'Halloran is actually going to be there.
He's a personal friend.
Q and A, and he's, he's in Clerks, if you don't know. But I'm really looking forward to that, and you can buy tickets, you can buy just one film block, and you don't have to commit yourself to the whole weekend. Then we have the Burlington Lunchtime Chamber Music Series, which has a saxophone quartet playing. That's Wednesday, and it's only half an hour long. So from 12:15 to 12:45 at the First United Methodist Church, and it's a free, free event, and you can bring your lunch and snack and listen to music. It's, it's a good time. And then, of course, the farmer's market, which I had no idea last week moved up a block. So I was like, where's the farmer's market? It was still there.
You found it?
I did.
Proud of you. Nothing else?
That's it. Thank you.
Okay. Counselor, welcome back to America again.
I just want to let, remind everybody, Taste of Burlington, June 30th. So this is the first year it's been back in probably 10 years.
Oh, wow.
So it'll be a great event. It's at Community Field on the 30th. Food starts at 11:00 and runs through 2:00, and then there's live entertainment, kids' activities throughout the entire day. For, I do know for 10 bucks, you can get a bracelet, and that bracelet gets you, gives you access to all the activities, the live entertainment, the baseball game that evening, and the fireworks that are taking place in the meantime. So it'll be a pretty good event.
I heard they might have a Velcro wall there.
They do.
Okay, so I'm just going to put it out here right now. This is my Fireball Run money. I'm putting 20 bucks up to get the mayor and the Velcro seat.
Only if Marlon McKee joins me. It's not going to happen.
I forgot one thing.
There's a bunch of money right there.
Bless your heart. Anyways, this weekend, they had Sunday, they had the Faith Festival down at Steamboat Days. That was also awesome. A lot of good singers that we have locally here. A lot of good talent in this area, so I just forgot to bring that up, but I really enjoyed all of that. If anybody found a speaker, I left a speaker down there. I couldn't find it. Still looking for it, so just throwing that out there.
Other than that, Steamboat Days, I was down there a couple of nights volunteering with them, and it was, they had a great lineup, so.
Good deal. Good deal. Everybody, Jim got a haircut. He's proud of himself tonight, so. Do you have any closing words? Mr. Farnum?
My barber doesn't do anyone else's, so...
Barber's his wife. Mr. Mack?
As you may or may not have already noticed, Agency Street, West Burlington Avenue, that intersection has closed, closed through traffic for West Burlington Avenue, north and southbound. There is a detour using Broadway. My work should commence relatively shortly. Broadway is now fully open, by the way. I know there'll be some issues on the first couple of days. There always is when you close down a road. There will be a lot of people using the frontage roads. They are private frontage roads, so there's a reason why we don't use those as the detour, and they don't handle the traffic load. But everybody drives safe. There's, there will be construction crews working on the edges. So we'll work on the outside first, get that finished up, and then move to the inside. At least when we move to the inside, you'll be allowed to make right-hand turns in and out of West Burlington Avenue. You'll still be restricted from going through the intersection, but at least you'll be able to turn off and on on Agency, so.
When will that be open again?
Open?
When will it open it back up?
Well, depends on weather. Six to eight weeks.
Okay.
When are you ever going to get the traffic lights done over at Hobby Lobby?
Yeah, what's up with that?
The reason why those are still delayed is because there's...
My wife has the same question for you.
I know. I have the same frustration. There's still power lines that are attached to the lower poles. Those have to get moved up to the higher, the bigger poles that you've seen move in. I think there's been some delays with the contractor moving them. They work for Alliance, so I'm limited on what we can do there. But if you notice, the Mast Arm is ready to rock and roll. It's sitting there on the ground. So we'll be, we'll be waiting diligently to get those up.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's been one of the harder parts. That is one where we've had to wait on the utility company to get that work done outside of our contract, and it's been a long, it's required a lot of patience waiting for them to get it completed. With tonight's stuff, Rich, Rich Joes, the time that he put in, I don't know if there's a way to communicate how, how much the police department is pleased with the work that he did to make this happen.
I think Major Grimshaw will probably talk to you, Mayor.
Yes, sir.
And I echo those comments. Him and I had many conversations where we were getting up in the morning and finding emails from Rich Joes on our phones. He had been down to the police department already, the new facility, trying to make that work seamlessly. And it, it did. There was some snafus, but Rich was always there and took great concern on getting that operation up and going, and did a fantastic job. And I can't, I can't say enough about him, because he, he truly cared about what we were doing and how, how it was going to affect the outcome of, of police operations. And, and he did a fantastic job, and, and I think some of it was on his own time, but that's, that's what it takes to get the job done, and that's why, very much so, Rich Joes is, is very deserving of those awards. You gave him, and more probably.
Thank you.
One of the hard things with IT, they have a, there's an awful lot of work within the system to be done, and they have to do it whenever it's there and needs to be done. So he does put an awful lot of time in at, at periods, and I, us being able to get as much done within our infrastructure as we do with two folks on staff is phenomenal. And Rich's ability to work with, patiently with folks through very stressful situations.
Yeah, I could definitely put him on full-time down at the police department and just take him out of here. If that's an option, I'll do it.
That's not an option, so.
And I do just want to echo with Chief Trexel, what, the time that he put into bettering himself, that also betters this department. And the sacrifices that he had to make for his family, and his family made, so that he could do that. We are a much better organization for having folks who are willing to do those kind of things, and I, I just don't know how to express the value of that. I think that's all I had.
Sorry, you have? Okay. Stephanie, anything before we close out? Just want to say congratulations to my son, Little Shane, who just had my grandson, Little Shane III. Sorry, sorry. Not really, not really. Nothing else?
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Move that we adjourn?
Second.
Moved in second. Kathleen? Do the honors.
Rinker?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Phillips?
Aye.
Graham Murray?
Aye.
McCambo?
Aye. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everybody. Good night.